Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to this evening's city council meeting. We'll begin with the singing of "O Canada," and I'd ask everyone to stand as they're able for the singing of the National Anthem, and we will be this evening's choir. Thank you very much, everybody. It's been moved by Councilor Etherington that the minutes of the regular meeting held February 27th and the special meetings held February 27th and March 6th is mailed to the mayor and councils be accepted. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest? Councilor Ionitis.
Yeah, I wanted to clear pecuniary interest on Planning and Infrastructure Committee, item number two. No, no, item number two, sorry.
Number two or number one?
Number one, sorry. Number one. As I may have property that's being affected by this.
Okay, thank you. I'll do the others later. There being no communications, we don't have to... Actually, there is communications, so I'll note the communication and refer it to file as listed on the agenda. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. And we'll now move into presentations for our certificates of service with a number of our various committees, and so I'll move to the other podium for that. This evening, we have an opportunity to thank a number of our long-service advisory committee members. A number of them have been able to join us here this evening, and then there's some who I'll acknowledge at the end who weren't able to join us this evening. So this is council's opportunity to show our appreciation for collectively many years of service to the various advisory committees over various numbers of years. I'll begin by inviting down Kristi Smith from the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee 2014 to 2016. Next, we have Peter Lennox from Compass Kitchener, 2014 to 2016. Next up, we have Mike Bowes with the Cycling Advisory Committee and the Cycling and Trails Advisory Committee from 2012 to 2016. Next up, we have Erin Atchison with the Downtown Action and Advisory Committee, 2014 to 2016. Next up, we have Lisa Keys with the Kitchener Housing Board of Directors from 2013 to 2016. Next up, we have Kevin Young with the Property Standards Committee and the Cycling and Trails Advisory Committee, 2012 to 2016. Next up is Chris Lettisi with the Safe and Healthy Community Advisory Committee from
amended recommendation for it.
So, okay, well, you can make an amendment to this recommendation.
Yes.
Okay, Counselor Janetski?
Yeah, thank you very much, and I did go take a look at it a couple of weeks ago before we had our last meeting, and walked down both walkways, especially also the one, a couple of doors down from between 23 and 27, right down to the bottom of slope as much as I could under the, you know, conditions of muck and all that type of stuff. And I didn't know where the property line was, and I'm glad you illustrated it here. But I also noticed that, based on my observation then, a couple of doors down from where the walkway is towards the street, there is a, in the backyard, but not really in the backyard, but in the wetland area, a bouncing-type circular gym where you can, kids can jump up and down with the screening on that.
There, there maybe.
Did you know there's an encroachment there, as I would see it? Did you know that there's an encroachment there? Actually, when you showed your photo from one angle, you could see it there. Yep, if you're looking, if you're looking back along the property line, if you can imagine where the property line is, right up almost where the street comes, between a black paved area proposed, and there's a play, a gym there.
Oh, like, yeah, there, there may be, it's, it is possible, because that is an open, free area. It's not fenced off or delineated between city property and residential property.
Right, so that'll have to be removed, you know, eventually.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure city staff, once they begin cutting trees, will approach those residents and tell them to kindly move their gym playground, yes.
Right, right. The recommendation that is in the report was the similar recommendation that was back two weeks ago, and at that time Counselor Gazola recommended an amendment to it to reflect what your request was. And is this the same one that you're going to be coming forward with? Oh, slightly different, okay, because I was just wondering whether that would be acceptable to you and your group in terms of what you want and what his amendment would be. So maybe clarification would be needed on that. But I, I see what your concerns are and how it needs to be addressed. And I agree with you, as you pointed out, signage is very important. I think if you have the appropriate signage, I don't think there'd be too much issue in terms of trespassing along the back. Let me get the odd one who's curious, but I think it'll address the, the regular trail walkers.
Okay, thank you. Those are all the questions that we have for you, sir. Okay, thank you. Thank you for your time. No problem. Counselor Fernandez, you had question of staff.
Yes, I do. I see that Director of Bylaw is here, Ms. McNeil. I don't know if you're here for another item or this, but if there was a gap between the two properties that was just removed off of the screen, so that the, we've seen this a number of times where maintenance roads around stormwater management ponds just sort of dead end, how do we monitor and deal with activities that might be happening behind there? Are we dependent on residents calling in to the call center and into bylaw, or do we, would we make a point of our trail guys going down to the end of those walkways?
Ms. McNeil?
Through Mayor Verbanovic, I, I think it would be a combination of probably both. People could certainly call the contact center, and then throughout the summer months, we do run our trail bike program, so they're often into areas such as this where they could pick up some of that activity.
Okay, do we see this as a, an ongoing problem, or would we see more of this when the trail's just dead end, as opposed to when a trail goes right through? Do we, where do we see a bigger problem, if you can tell us that?
Through Mayor Verbanovic, that I can't answer for sure. I wasn't prepared for the questions.
Sorry.
So I could certainly get back to you and, and check with staff and see where they're encountering the problems.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thanks for what you can give me.
Okay, there being no other questions, I'll now go to you, Counselor Ionitis, to bring in the recommendation from committee.
It's been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Sarah Marsh. Item...
Four?
Item four, be approved.
Okay. Counselor Gazola?
Yes, last week when I was here, I moved an amendment that was in agreement with what the neighborhood were asking for, and that was that the, the boardwalk portion be left in a natural state, it would be left so that, that we can still get in there to look after whatever sewer work we have to do. So, and that, and that failed, because one of the reasons were that a number of counselors were concerned with the, with the dead end and, and the fact there, whether it is a fact, an alternative fact, that there would be more problems with having two dead ends there. So, the recommendation that I'd bring, like to bring forward tonight is that, that that entire section be closed off, be left there for, for our operations staff to be able to check on the sewers or whatever maintenance that is required, but that the pathway would come up where there is a natural area to, to move up to Brisbane Court beside 533 on the left-hand side of your picture, and then go along the sidewalk and then join back up with the, the pathway on Fallowfield Drive. So it's, it's basically, as suggested in, in, in our plans, that from time to time we, we need to do that, and it's, it's, it's what I consider a minor adjustment. I have further comments, but I'll wait till, if anybody else wants to comment.
Okay, Counselor Gazola, in looking at that, I would suggest that that probably is not an amendment, but it's actually a motion contrary to the, the current one. So what would need to happen is council would need to vote down the current one, and if they did, then we could consider this as an alternate rooting.
Well, how do you decide what's an amendment and what's, hey, it's not considerably different from what's on the table?
Sorry?
It's not considerably different than what's on the table, so...
Well, it's...
Pardon?
It, it's, it's not providing a, a trail where a trail would go.
Well, sure, it's providing a trail where, there's no trail there now. I mean...
And, and the, and the recommendation that came from committee is that we would, we would allow the, the trail to, to proceed. So if that ma, motion fails, then we will, you know, we would be able to consider your recommendation. Counselor Marsh?
Oh, I thought we were gonna, I had a question of staff based on the amendment, if we were going to be looking at the amendment, but if we're not, then I, I can wait. A boardwalk section to, to maintain the sanitary sewer.
Mr. Redman?
Through the mayor, some sort of material would have to be placed down to allow that large vehicle to access the cleanouts for the sewer, whether that's asphalt or crushed stone or something, which would look very similar to a pathway.
So in fact, it would be a continuation of the path regardless, because the, that big truck that we saw in the presentation would still need to me, to access the, the entire pathway. Is that correct?
That's correct. It would, it would need to allow some sort of vehicle there throughout the season, so there'd need to be something, and it would look very similar to a pathway.
And also, additional question, will this pathway, if completed as staff is proposing, will it have some, will it receive winter maintenance as well?
Through the mayor, it would depend if there was an issue, we'd have to, if we had to access it in the wintertime, we may have to do some winter maintenance, otherwise I, I would assume staff would schedule their time around the winter for the most part.
Right, okay, thank you.
Counselor Janetski?
Yeah, thank you. I would beg to differ in terms of your comments there on, that we have to turn it down, because when I'm looking at the staff report, and when you look at it, there was also consideration as, as an option to have this, if, if it didn't work, to go along Brisbane. So I think basically the issue of the recommendation of being Reach Two, which is basically where it's going to, is just slightly modified, that doesn't deal with the entire Reach Two, but it's just a part of Reach Two, and then it takes the, the roadway portion. So it's just really, I see it as an amendment to the original motion. We still want to approve the, the, the pathway, it's just slightly modified from behind the homes and to, to Brisbane Drive for, where the homes are. But we've still got all those other connections that got to go through under Homer Watson, and tying up over the tree line, and then crosses over to Fallowfield, and they become different reaches, but it's, it's all still part of the whole system. So I, I, you know, maybe you want an interpretation from the, from the clerk.
Well, Madam Clerk, if you care to comment on it, it'd certainly be welcome interpretation. I used the reference in 25.7.8 of our amendments to motions that indicates that an amendment cannot be used if its intent is to negate the intent of the main motion. And I believe the intent, as approved by council, or as recommended by committee, rather, was to have the trail go be, behind these homes, and as a result of that, to relocate it would, in effect, be a negation of the recommendation before us. If you can give me better advice, I'm more than open to receive it.
Through the mayor, you are correct. An amendment does need to be germane to the main motion, and therefore it cannot negate aspects of the main motion, or the major components of a motion when it's before.
So, and this would, what's being proposed, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Through the mayor, an amendment would not be in order if it negates the main intent or main purpose of, of the motion itself. Amendments have to be germane in corresponding with the main motion.
Okay, Counselor Gazola, I'm not gonna, well, you're actually next, actually, no, Counselor Janetski, you had the floor, were you done?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, then Counselor Gazola, you were next.
Yeah, I have a question of staff, but just to respond, the main motion that came forward from staff dealt, well, there were two parts to it. The one part was the Valzer Creek, straightening up of that, and the environmental assessment that went, went through, and, and nobody's questioned that whatsoever. The second part of the motion was to put a trailway through, and staff had, came forward with, with a recommendation, and I've come forward with a slightly different one, slightly amended.
Okay, that's, that's the ruling that, that I've made. I did turn to the clerk for advice, and they have verified that it's consistent with our, our procedure, and...
And who can I appeal to?
Well, I guess if you want, you can challenge the chair, is your option.
Well, I will do that.
You want to challenge the chair?
I will challenge the ch, challenge the chair on, on the ruling, and I'll hold my breath for the results.
Okay, so the chair has been challenged, so I guess we would now vote, and presumably it'll be a, a recorded vote. If you are upholding my interpretation and the clerk's interpretation of the procedural bylaw, you'll vote yes, and if you don't uphold it, you'll vote no. Can you bring it back on the screen? Okay, there we go. All those in favor? All those opposed? The interpretation has been upheld. I'll come back to you, Counselor Ionitis.
Well, my question is, is there a motion now on the table, or?
Yeah, your, your motion is the one that's on the table.
Okay, that's the one that's on table?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Gazola?
Yeah, I want to ask staff, how long has the, the sewer line been in place there?
Ms. Fletcher?
Through the chair, I think we have staff who are looking for that information right now, and, and we can get back to you on that. It's been in, in place for a while.
A little more definitive than a while?
I don't have that information in front of me.
Do we, do staff have any idea how many times we've had to service that location? Actually, you had to put that big picker truck through there.
Go ahead.
So through the mayor, I don't have the age of the sewer line. What I can say, and, and I don't have the maintenance records on that section of sewer, I do know that one of the main reasons for the Valzer Creek restoration works was related to impacts to the sanitary sewer system, so manholes where the creek had eroded to the point where the manhole was undermined. So there is, there is the need to be able to access that infrastructure and, and provide maintenance, as well as the need to protect that infrastructure through the creek works. I can certainly get information...
No, no, and I'm not challenging that, I, I can appreciate that, I just, I just wonder, you know, it's been there for a considerable period of time, and we've never really had to go through that to back a vehicle in there or not, but, so I'm just wondering how big an issue that is, but that's fine, thank you. I, I would like the appropriate time to make a comment.
Go ahead.
Am I the first and only one to comment?
Yep, no, there are other people.
Oh, well, then I don't want to jump ahead of everyone else.
Well, no, you were, you have the, the microphone, so go ahead.
I'll wait for, for, for comments until I hear from other counselors.
Counselor Janetski?
Yes, thank you. I'm not, I, I like where we're going on this in terms of having the trailer, because I think it's, it's a, it's a good proposal to connect the, the systems from the west side of Homer Watson Boulevard over to the east side of Fallowfield Field. I know we have to go through the back of the wetlands, but I, I strongly agree with the residents in terms of their comments, in terms of where they're coming from. I did indicate that the signage is the most appropriate way of doing it. I've tried to walk back there as much as possible, and it's, it's challenging, but I know once the roadwork goes into a degree to provide access, and you saw from the pictures that the delegation had presented what it looks like right now, and then once the road goes in, there's going to be a lot of trees going to be removed. If we can minimize that, I think that's the way, the way to go. So I'm not going to support this recommendation of staff, because we have to now defeat it, and, and I will support Counselor Gazola's recommendation should the first vote be defeated, and he's going to come back with the second. So that's, that's my position. I think the residents have made a good argument, and I'm prepared to support them.
Counselor Fernandez?
Thank you. This is a bit of a difficult one for me, because I've, I've always supported trails through existing neighborhoods, new neighborhoods, and one of the things I've been really adamant about is that the development industry must provide appropriate information about every trail network that is going to be happening. And if it is not going to be located in a specific location, because it is undecided that they need to put very clear that it's conceptual, it is very unfortunate that Carson Reid did not do that for the residents here. And I think it's, it shows and proves the point that we are going to have continuous and ongoing struggles as we infill our trail network. We need to get ahead of this, and we need to be letting people know years in advance, and, and we've got, you know, you guys have been in there for 11 years now. It's really a big shock to you to suddenly hear that you're going to have some kind of a trail network. Whether people use this now unofficially or officially, there's probably a lot less than could be or may be along this trail. I've gone through this with residents in my ward, they're, they said exactly the same concerns that you had, they had exactly the same upset and requests, and we did work very diligently with them. You know, and, and I got some emails last week after I said that, that told me that they were, many, some of them were not happy, and I do recognize that some of the plantings have not taken as well. And so I urge staff to make sure that whatever work we're going to be doing with residents, that we do it sincerely and with, with the most positive outcome that we possibly can. So I am going to support this trail, I recognize that that's not what your ward counselor wants, and in, in Lakewood, it's not what you want at this time, but I think we have to continue to make those connections so that residents who want to walk, who want to bike, who want to find alternatives to being on the street, and you're, you're correct, your street is very quiet, and we could have cyclists going out on the street. But it's that, that connectivity that's really, really important. And yes, the street will be a good connection, but there are many people who, it will, it will present a, a different challenge to having more cyclists out on front and then going back and behind, than just having that continuous moving and flowing through of tra, of, of trail users. So I hope that, in the end, you won't find this as disruptive, and I know that staff will work diligently with you to try to minimize the impacts with a variety of plantings and, and other items.
And the fences as well.
Okay, sir, and...
So that was my next comment, Mr. Wolf, is, is certainly, I think it's important that you work with staff. If fencing is to happen on private property, well, that is going to be the responsibility of, of residents, but there may be some ways we can work with you on that, so.
Counselor Gazola?
Yeah, thank you. I've been involved in that area for a number of years, and there was another part of this whole trail, I think it's called Reach One, that came forward a number of years ago, and I'm, I'm not sure, that is now not in the ward that I represent. It was in the ward that I did represent now. Originally, I, I have tended to agree with the position that we've taken, and to have trails going, going through areas, and, but I, in this particular situation, I've had an opportunity to reconsider a number of issues. One of the major things that, that I keep going back to is that we have here a neighborhood, and a neighborhood that has pretty much solidarity on, on, on where they are and, and what they would like for their neighborhood. I'm sorry. And the important thing here is that, the issue here is that they moved in here, and it was green space, and they expected it to be green space for as long as they were there. It was land that belonged to the GRCA, and they would have no concept, it wasn't until 2012 that the, the idea of, of the trail going through their backyards first came to light. Now, when they went in there, they paid a premium for this property. And I'm basically asking for an exception here to our policy, because these people were here before the concept of the trail going through there was here. There still will be a trail, there will be, the connectivity really hasn't been disrupted. It's a matter of, of going through an area that is already set aside as, as, as a pathway, that's already, was already put there when we did the plans. So whatever, why we put it there at the time, I'm not sure, and people that lived there must have seen that. And so we're, we're, we're not, and these people are not saying, "Not in my own backyard." They're, they're saying, "You're, you're welcome to use our front yards, and we're going to keep it nice and clean for you, that you can use it all year round." The, the, the important thing here is that they, they have... The important thing here is that homeownership is probably the largest asset that the normal individual acquires in their lifetime, and it means a great deal to them. I mean, and, and when we go and change, all of a sudden, change our plans, that's affecting the largest investment, the largest thing they'll ever do in their lifetime. And so I, I, again, I'm saying, we're, we're not cutting out the trail, they're not, not welcoming people on the, on the, on their, in their area, and, and we're, we're talking about going off a pathway for 420 meters, not even a half a kilometer, and, and it's, it's, it's not going from one pathway into one that is hard to, to walk across or to bicycle across, it's actually going to a, to an easier pathway. So I, and in, and to boot, the city would save $150,000 that they could use on trailways and other places in the city. So I would ask council to turn it down and come up with a minor amended plan. Thank you.
Are there any further comments? If not, the motion's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Okay. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's carried. So council has approved the, the recommendation as, as it is. We'll now move on to Ms. Palmer and the infra, and the tenders. Are there any questions on tender one, the Hitachi server? Ah, geez, I need somebody to move them first. Move it, Counselor Ionitis. Any questions on number one? Counselor Gazola on, on one? Oh, and sorry, I needed a seconder for that, Counselor Fernandez. Okay, go ahead, Counselor Gazola.
I'm just curious, there's only, we, we only have one bid here. It's for a piece of computer equipment, and there's only one bid.
Ms. Palmer?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, you'll note at the top of the second page, we talk about, because it's a Hitachi server, a piece of equipment, so it's a manufacturer that has a distributor network, so that's why there is only the one bid received.
I'm sorry, try that one again, it's a...
It has a distributor network, so we have a distributor based on territory, and that's two bid.
Oh, it's, well, you're telling me you have to go to that, to that particular product?
Correct, we currently have a Hitachi server, we needed to do...
Okay, so, so when it's a one particular product, okay, we only...
Right, so...
What are the possibilities of looking at other products?
Mr. Chaplin?
Through the chair, that's not possible, the current server is a Hitachi...
The current server is a Hitachi, this is simply an expansion to that server, and so it can only be expanded with a Hitachi product.
So is this a second server?
No.
Are we tied to Hitachi until we die now?
This is the addition of a storage rack to the current server, so yes, we are attached to them, to the extent we need to expand it in the future.
Otherwise, we would have to replace the whole thing.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions on janitorial paper product? Counselor Fernandez?
I have a general question regarding the over-budgeting of a number of tenders. Do you want me to ask that now, or do you want me to ask that at the end?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. So we've got eight tenders here that total 1.242 million dollars in over-budget. And I would like to, and a number of them are consulting services, road construction, and laneway construction. Can I understand how we're going to find 1.242 million dollars to fill in that gap, notwithstanding that when I look at the variance report, we are $941,000 in operating surplus? That doesn't have anything to do with our capital, sorry, yes, with our capital projects.
Mr. Chapman?
Through the chair, most of the projects he referenced are accelerated infrastructure renewal projects. As indicated in the tender report, any deficit will be funded from the uncommitted capital account. You may recall last year, most of our construction projects actually closed with surpluses on the tenders, and sometimes we find ourselves in this position where we're under, in other cases where we're over. I would point out that we have had some projects, being Sheldon Avenue and Krug Street, that closed with about $900,000 in savings so far, and so there are savings that will offset the overages, but that's the reason why we maintain the uncommitted capital account is to fund these sorts of variances.
Okay, I mean, number 17 of the tenders is $830,000 over-budget. Why would we not hold that one back and re-tender that at a later date? It just seems, actually frankly ridiculous, that we would even consider being over close to a million dollars on a tender like that.
I would defer to engineering staff on the specifics. What I would point out is that the bids are fairly close on this tender, and so, well, we use estimates for the purposes of setting our construction budgets. At the end of the day, the specifics of the project will determine the costing we get. We have no reason to believe that delaying this would yield any savings. In fact, the costs will likely only increase in the future.
So, Mr. Chapman, just to make sure I heard you correctly, is you're saying that this, and this is the Keel Street tender, that we're over 800, that Keel Street is not that big of a road. It's not even a major arterial road. I would hazard a guess, it's not even a minor collector road. So it's just a local street with not a tremendous amount of traffic that would be flowing through there. Why would we not hold off on this project until we can get a better tender price?
Mr. Redman?
Through the mayor, with respect to Keel Street, there's a bunch of areas where existing sidewalk is on private property, so there's redesign that has to happen to get that sidewalk either off private property or to acquire that property. There's also a creek crossing, which will likely require significant dewatering, and non-standard storm structures that may be influencing pricing. So there's a number of complexities around this project that have influenced the price a little bit, but staff would not recommend delaying this further because we have done that in the past, and we've actually not been favorable in terms of getting a better price after deferring a tender. It would also add complexity to work for next year as well because it would likely get bundled in with the ARP program next year and would offset the planned work that would happen that year.
Okay. I would like to have that pulled out separately then, Mr. Mayor. Notwithstanding with what Mr. Redman said, I just don't feel comfortable approving a tender that's that far off the mark.
I'll deal with number 17 separately.
Do you want me to ask other questions I have, or do you want me to come back?
Go ahead, probably have a boat.
Okay, so on, are you going through them individually, or do you want us to jump through the one we have questions for?
No, I'm going through them individually.
Okay, I'll come back in when you get to that one.
Okay. Anybody else on the janitorial paper product? Wall Street Road Reconstruction, Counselor Marsh?
Thank you. I have a question just about, it's maybe the opposite issue to what Counselor Fernandez was asking about. The winning bid is about $500,000 less than the next lowest bid, and I'm trying to understand if staff can give us an indication as to what was different about that bid, and are we confident that the quality of work will be to our satisfaction?
Ms. Palmer?
Three, Mr. Mayor, although I can't speak to the specifics as to why that is lower, we have utilized this contractor several times in the past and do not have any concerns related to the tender submission or their ability to do the work.
Okay, that sounds great. And another question that I wanted to ask staff is, we're stopping the work at St. Vincent Street instead of going all the way to Lancaster Street, and I'm just wondering if it's planned to complete that last block before Lancaster in another late year soon, or do we know that at this time?
Mr. Redman?
Through the mayor, so I don't have that detail with me right now, but I can certainly get back to you.
That's fine, I didn't give you any lead time to answer that, so I all appreciate that answer soon because residents will be asking, "Well, what about this last block? Why is it, you know, being left out of this project?" Thank you.
Number four, Hugo Crescent and Laurin Avenue, any questions? Miscellaneous asphalt and concrete work. Number five, any questions? Counselor Fernandez?
So I don't want, I don't have any questions, but it might be, I want to thank Ms. Fletcher for giving me some additional information on this. This was something that, Mr. Mayor, you and I had raised as a concern in terms of what was happening with all of this aggregate material. It looks like staff has done a good job to reduce, I think, the tender from what it originally was, as well as finding some opportunities to reuse materials in a different location.
You're talking about number six now.
I apologize.
Pick up and dispose those scrap asphalt?
Yes, sorry about that.
Okay. Counselor Singh, was yours a number five, or?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
To deal with the, Counselor Fernandez did raise a good point about the deficits, but here we're seeing something different, about 490,000 in a surplus. Will that surplus stay in the similar account for additional works to be done later on in the year, or this would be the entirety of what's budgeted for asphalt-related work, and it would go into a contingency fund, or?
Mr. Chapman?
And then, through the chair, as noted on page two, it's proposed to be carried forward to fund the 2018 program. You'll note that last year we ended with a deficit, so this program does vary substantially year to year. In some years, we overspend, in other years, we underspend, and also in some years, we run a fall program that would draw that balance down. So to answer your question, yes, it will be carried forward and used as a part of a program in 2018.
Okay, and that's what I assumed, but can part of this be also used for any other deficits from other roadworks that we're experiencing in deficits in tenders?
Through the chair, it would depend on the original funding source. You can see that there are a variety of funding sources depending on the nature of the work. At this point in time, there is no need to though, because there is sufficient funding in the uncommitted capital account to fund all of the tender deficits.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Ms. Palmer, did you still want to add anything, or no? No, okay. Number six, any other questions? Counselor Gallois, say what?
Yep. If we dealt with this one before, and it's just coming back, I'm looking for a reminder. Is there no way that we can do this in-house internally?
Ms. Fletcher?
Through the chair, we do the demolition work in-house, but this particular tender serves three divisions. It serves Kitchen Utilities, Operations Roads and Traffic, and Operations Environmental Service. So we do utilize internal forces where we can, but we don't have the forces to remove all of the unusable material for all three divisions.
So if we have the ability, meaning staff resources, to do some of the work, we will, and this is just a contract, in the event that we don't have the ability, is that what I'm hearing?
Ms. Fletcher?
That is correct, but what I am stressing is, we do not have the capacity internally to do it all.
Okay, that's fair, if we don't have the capacity to do it all, but as long as we're making efforts to try and do what we can internally, that's the point I'm trying to make.
Through the chair, we are, and I will remind council that the aggregate process is one of the reviews that Ms. Tasker is leading us through.
Perfect, thank you.
Well, just along those lines, Ms. Fletcher, you know, are we utilizing, and I know we've moved away from formally having a winter works program, which I think might actually be worthy of a revisit by our staff, because, you know, I look at this winter, that wasn't overly onerous. We have staff available. Can we not be doing projects like this, like we did in the old days, as part of winter works?
Through you, Mayor Vervanovic, that is part of what we're reviewing as part of the aggregate review. Winter maintenance is also under review, so I don't know that we'll get there right away, but it is certainly something that we're looking at, that in milder winters, we will have a body of work that staff can be doing. If we looked at 2016, this time of the year, it was a milder winter. This December 2 now has been a much busier winter. So you're right, we do need to find, to be able to adjust to the weather and the volume of the winter work.
Okay, any other questions on this one? Okay, Counselor Yonetski?
Yeah, on this tender of the concrete, asphalt, et cetera, it's noted in the report that there were five interested parties, and two tenders had been received, yet only one tender is shown. What happened to the other tender, and who is it?
Ms. Palmer?
So the other, three, Mr. Mayor, the other tender that was received was for the Schedule A component, that supply of the virgin material, and that's what was awarded back in August 2016.
And that will be coming back in August?
No, no, it was awarded in August. That was for Schedule A, the supply of virgin material.
Okay.
They didn't bid on the Schedule B portion.
All right, I see, okay. That, I didn't catch that, that threw me, okay.
Okay, no other questions on this one? Number seven, consulting services, anybody? Counselor Fernandez?
So I'm a little bit puzzled, and I did get, you know, a very brief explanation from Mr. Gol, and when I sent him my question about this, Aquifer Beach was the consultant that did all of the work for our stormwater master plan, as well as our implementation plan. Would we have not had some discussion with them about their pricing for their consulting services? Because they are intimately in knowledge about every single one of the stormwater ponds, they did all of that work for the stormwater master plan. Was there, I know that maybe we separate our tenders out from discussion with staff, but I'm just a little bit puzzled about the high cost of this tender at $183,000. Is there any discussion at all?
Mr. Redman?
Through the mayor, so the work that Aquifer Beach had previously done is sort of at like the 30,000-foot level, so it was sort of master plan documents and things like that. This is actually doing detailed design on a retrofit for a pond, which is much more complicated work. There's also approvals that have to be granted from the Ministry of Environment, and all these take time, so when they're putting together the proposal, they would estimate the time to do all those components of the work and put in a submission. I'd be hesitant to coach a consultant on putting together a proposal because I think it may actually violate our purchasing bylaw, so for it to be fair and reasonable for all parties, they should bid on the same contract documents.
And I understand that, but believe me, when I saw, we... We had intimate knowledge about a lot of the stormwater management ponds. I guess I'm just hoping that they can be a little bit more than what they...
Full term, or is it 150 a year? Right now, it says the average annual spend over the past three years was 326,000. What's the average annual spend?
Three, Mr. Mayor, I'll start, and then I may defer to Mr. Chapman. So you are correct, the average annual spend over the past three years was 326,000. We are moving to a cost of 450,000 for the four-year term, or for the three-year term, my apologies.
450 a year?
No, 450 for the three-year term.
But right now, you say the annual is 326. I'm trying to compare apples to apples here.
Mr. Chapman?
Through the chair, and Counselor Gazola, we can confirm this after the fact. My understanding is that presently, the total spend for the three-year term was the 326,000, so about 110,000 per year, and that will increase to about 150,000 per year under this new contract.
Okay, that, yeah, so the annual spend is 110, not 326.
That's my understanding, that's not the way the report's worded, so I'll confirm that.
Well, it says the average annual spend was 326.
Right. That's what I'm saying, I believe that's a typo in the report.
Okay, okay, so that's fine, now that we've got that settled, so there's a huge increase here. What is that attributable to? I would think that cost of computer things are going down, or should be going down.
And in many cases, that's true. I think it's fair to say that the pay-as-you-go model that we had before has served us well. We resisted moving to this enterprise license, which is what we're moving to under this program. I would note that we probably would have spent at least $40,000 additional under the contract, under the pay-as-you-go model this year, with the additional services we would have bought, so we believe we're at a tipping point where there is now more value for us to switch to this new model.
Okay, so you're changing sort of the models, okay, so what are the, what is the advantage of changing to a different pricing plan? What are the, what advantage is there?
Well, in moving to an enterprise license versus pay-as-you-go, we basically have access to the whole suite of tools without paying for them à la carte. Some examples, we're seeing a lot of growth in GIS, in the use of mobile technology, which depends on GIS, in the proliferation of open data. All of these things are based on the ESRI tool, and it's becoming more expensive to do that on a pay-as-you-go basis. There's more value now for us to do this under the enterprise agreement.
I can appreciate that, but that's why, you know, and yet, our annual spend's going from 110 to 150, so it's hard to understand.
What's noted in the report, though, is that had we stayed on the pay-as-you-go model, our projection is that it would have been 3.5% more expensive to basically purchase the same services as pay-as-you-go, which is why we're now at the tipping point, and we should switch the contracting model.
Okay. Ms. Palmer, did you want to add something to that, or no? Okay. Counselor Singh, not on this one? Okay, go ahead.
I think the report does state that the cost would be lower had we not decided to shift over. Well, the cost would continue to increase, sorry, had we not decided to shift over from the pay-as-you-go model. My question is more related to the information that's available through our open data.
Counselor Singh, can I just interrupt you for a sec? I just wanted to, I guess, say thanks to the Boy Scout leaders and the Boy Scouts for coming and sitting in on part of our council meeting, and hopefully you found it at least a little bit interesting and not too boring, and excellent. We welcome you back anytime. Thank you.
Thanks, Senator.
No problem. Sorry, Counselor. No problem. Sorry, Counsel Singh, please continue.
No, not a problem. So a lot of the information is available through open data, and it's easy accessible by our average citizen, but much of the data that's available there is also very useful for specific business purposes, as well as real estate purposes as well. Do we have an avenue or ability to have a paid-for service for some of the components that may not be available to the public right now, on a, on a, on a general public portal, or specifically, you know, what's available right now to the general public, as opposed to what internally we can use the GIS software?
Mr. Chap?
Through the chair, that used to be the model within IT, that we would sell data sets, and in the move to open data, that philosophy was fundamentally changed, and the position that council took at the time was that data would be provided free of charge, subject to the right user license. And so I would suggest that our direction increasingly will be provide more data free of cost, and as much data as possible. So I'd be certainly happy to recirculate some of the discussion around that at the time council made the decision.
No, I, I support that, but again, the, the, through the GIS portal, what's available through the general public and what internally we can access is a little bit different. There are different components. What I'm seeing is, are there user groups that can access that, those additional information, but through cost for service, and would a contract such as this allow us to, to do that? If I'm a little bit at loss with my understanding, I can take this offline, so it's on.
I'm not quite clear on the question, so maybe helpful to take it offline, and, and so I can understand it better.
Yeah, it, it has nothing to do with this tender, that's my more understanding about the, the GIS, GIS software, but I can contact you.
Yeah, we can try to keep all the questions then to the tenders. Counsel Guzola, is this on the same one still, or? Okay, so number nine, Alice Avenue, anybody? Counsel Yonetski?
Yeah, thank you. Alice Avenue and Carn from There Are Certain Streets, as noted in the report. I didn't realize that has now been relocated from my ward into Ward 10. The issue on the next page deals with the, again, the deficit that we have of about $300 million, and I sort of got an answer, or I heard the answer that was provided, but what I'm also puzzled on is that in this funding, there's 1.2 million, or almost 1.3 million, coming as a grant from the Clean Water and Wastewater Fund. I'd like a clarification of what that's all about, and how did that sort of nicely fall into this ward, or into this project, but not other projects? And I know sometimes we have the federal gas tax, and applies to certain ones, but I didn't get that, so I'm looking for a clarification.
Mr. Chapman?
Through the chair, this represents an allocation under the first phase of the federal government's new infrastructure program. There was a report that came to council last fall and recommended that the allocation be assigned to two projects. This was one of them. So that was a council decision that was made last year.
And do we get the, the whole thing, or just part of that, of that funding from the, from the feds?
We've been told what our allocation is, and we've assigned that allocation to two projects. This is the amount that was allocated to, to this project.
For this one, okay, so that's, that's the rationale. So who, who made that decision? Like, finance, or engineering, or how does that work?
No, council did. There was a staff report that came to council in the fall of last year, and council assigned the funding to two projects.
At that time?
This was one of them.
Oh, okay, so I, I, thanks for the clarification. Okay, thank you. Counsel Guzola on this one?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yeah, we, we made the decision on budget day when we approved the budget. There were two, two projects in the capital forecast. The other one was around $3 million. No, my, my question is, and it's already been raised by, by Counsel Fernandez, and I'm just curious, there are a number of, there are a number of deficits here. I, I just, I don't know if, I wasn't paying proper attention, but is there a, a bottomless pit to the number of deficits that we can deal with? Or is there, do we have to sometime pull back and say we're gonna?
Well, I, I think what we heard Counsel Guzola from staff is that we've had instances where some come in under budget, and we have some instances now where some come in over budget.
No, and I heard that, and, but there seems to be quite a flow of over budget. I, I will leave it at that. I, what I did want to ask, two other parts to that.
Mr. Chapman, would you want to add something there?
Through the chair, if council were to approve every tender tonight, $1.1 million would remain in the uncommitted capital account. That's below the balance that we like to maintain, but there would be a balance still left.
Okay, that, that was, the other thing I was, wanted to know, we, we have a lot of projects in the process, because we have a lot of work to do. Is that costing the price of tenders to go up? Is there so much work out there that we're ending up having to pay a higher price?
Ms. Palmer?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it would be speculation on our part to say whether or not it is a surplus of construction activity, which is limiting the number of bids we're receiving, and therefore increasing the cost. We have reached out to the Grand Valley Construction Association for any insights that they're seeing in terms of trends in the industry that may help us.
My, my final question is, in the whole picture of things, are, are we, are we done for this year in, in, in awarding large contracts, because now they, they have to be out there? I, I'm just curious as to how much of the target that we have for the annual catch-up, how much are we, have we looked after up to this point, for, for, just the target for this year?
Mr. Reedman?
Actually, it can come back to us, okay, I'll, I'll, rather than put you on the spot now. But I, I would like a sort of an update as to where we're going with what we hope to get done.
Well, and I guess I would just point out that while it won't necessarily impact 2017, 18, the federal budget certainly is contemplating, you know, significant investments across the board for municipalities.
We've been hearing that for about two or three years.
Sorry?
We've been hearing that for two or three years.
Well, and we've seen Phase One come through, and now Phase Two will be announced in Wednesday's budget.
I'm looking for a lot more than a million dollars, thanks.
Number 10, Fourth Avenue Cannot Road, any questions? South Strasburg Trunk Sanitary Sewer, any questions? Laneway 50015, any questions? Hable Place, Peter Street, any questions? Krug Street Road Reconstruction, any questions? End User Computing Devices, any questions? Counsel Guzola?
Now, that's where we're buying all our, our units? Is that, it's a five-year plan? Is that, is that a fixed price for the next five years? I keep expecting prices for computers to go down. Am I, am I not in touch with reality?
Ms. Palmer?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, so the pricing is fixed. I can't speak as to whether the pricing should continue to go down. I can speak to that. It is very competitive pricing due to the nature of the number of agencies which are participating in this contract.
So, so we, we got fixed prices on our computers for the next five years?
Ms. Palmer?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, so it is within the term, so it is a five-year period with options to renew for the fixed period. They are fixed unit prices, as I understand it from review of the contract.
I would hope that over the five-year period, something's changing. For paying the same price, I would hope the units are much better or something.
Counsel Fernandez, do you have a question on this?
I have a general question after.
Okay, I'll come back to you. Number 16, Belmont Avenue, any questions? Number 17, Keel Street, any questions? Number 18, Hydrovac Excavation Services, any questions? Number 19, 345 King Land Sale, any questions? And Counsel Fernandez, your general question?
So we've got a lot of road reconstruction work, tenders here today, and oftentimes during our budget process, we talk about how many kilometers of laneway we want to get accomplished through our ARIP. It would be, would it be possible for us to have an understanding with all of these projects that we may or may not approve tonight, how much of that goal we, we will have accomplished by the end of this year, if all of these, if all of these projects are completed within the, within the year, or maybe, you know, some may carry over into, into 2018? Is that, is that a, a, something we can get information on?
Mr. Reedman?
Through the mayor, so I do have clarification from Mr. Allen in Engineering. So the total kilometerage for this year is 5.581 kilometers, and my understanding is this is the bulk of the ten, or the, the, this is all of the tenders for road reconstruction for this year.
So 5.?
5.81 kilometers.
81 kilometers.
And that's for the AARP program.
Okay. And, and how does that fit in with our, our goal for this year? Was, is the, does that hit the goal that we wanted for this year?
Through the mayor, this hits our goal for this year.
It's our goal for this year. Okay, thanks for entertaining that question.
Okay, so the tenders have been moved in second, and I'll deal with a couple that have been asked to be dealt with separately first. Number 10, Counsel Singh had a conflict, so all those in favor, opposed, with the noted conflict, it's carried. Number 17, we've been asked to deal with separately, the Keel Street Road construction, all those in favor, opposed, one, two opposed, that's carried, sorry? Who's the third? Oh, sorry, I didn't see you, okay. That's carried. In the balance of the report, all those in favor, opposed, that's carried. Okay, we'll now move on to the reports of the committees. Counsel Iannetta's Community and Infrastructure Services.
It's been moved by myself and seconded by Counsel Sarah Marsh, that the report of the Community and Infrastructure Services Committee be adopted through items through one and seven, and we dealt with item number, no, we didn't, we didn't, that was the other one. Items one through seven.
Okay, one through seven. Moved in second, it counts for Davey.
Thank you. I'm trying to remember how the votes went at committee, just in terms of trying to keep the process moving here, but I would ask that items, I guess, if anyone, other counselor has a change, that's fine, but I would ask that items A, B, C, and D be voted on as a group, and item E be voted on separately, and I just have a brief comment as well for number seven, pardon me.
So you're asking for 7E to be dealt with separately?
Essentially, yes, yes.
Okay, so you, anyone make a comment?
Yes, afterwards, fine.
Sorry?
If anyone else has any.
Uh, no, you're the only one.
Okay, there was, Counsel Galley-Slech just asked that they all be dealt with separately, that's fine.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I just want to make a quick comment, that I, I just, I continue to have some concerns in terms of our granting process, that we do have a subcommittee delegated to objectively and without political interference, make decisions on who should get our grant money, and being that we are, the appeal body is giving more money to the majority of the people that had an issue with the regular process, I think sets a bad, sets a bad precedent on a go-forward basis. So in, on, in that note, I will be voting against all of them, except for letter E, and that is only because letter E, night shift, is not asking for more money, they're just asking for a shift in how that money is received.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Singh?
Yes, thank you, just my quick comment. I would be supportive on the, the changes recommended in item number seven to the organizations that had before, appeared before council. I do share, though, mutual concern, as Counsel Davey has outlined, that it's unfair that organizations that come before us tend to be heard and, and assisted with additional, additional funding. I do, though, disagree in the aspect that, you know, even though there is a subcommittee that brings forward recommendations, at the end of the day, the final decision is of this council, and we have to look on individual case basis, and if we feel a change is necessary, then I think it's prudent for, for us to decide to do so. But from this, I, I think, apart from those that just be, appear before the, the committee, we need to look through the, all the recommendations and, and assess them in a very, in a more equitable way than just those that appear, so. But I will be supporting the, the ones outlined in item number seven.
Okay, Counsel Guzola?
Yeah, I don't know if someone has asked for a recorded vote on those items. I, at, at committee meeting, I passed, I put forward the recommendations that staff had put forward, and I had, I didn't support any of the changes at that point, so, and I haven't changed my mind at this point, so I would like to have a recorded vote on each one of those items.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
Counsel Marsh?
Thank you. At the committee meeting, I had put forward an amendment that did not pass, and I'd like to put it forth again, just that the balance of the amount remaining in the Tier Two account be transferred to special events for our Canada Day celebration of 2017.
Okay, so we'll have to deal with the recommendation that's here first, and then if it's not successful, then we'll come forward to you for...
Okay, so can we then vote separately on that last?
Yep, I'm dealing with each piece of number seven.
Clause, okay, thank you.
Okay, so I will deal with items one, two, three, five, and six first. All those in favor? One, two, three, five, and six only. Counsel Guzola, you're looking... Okay, seven, seven we'll go through one by one. So one, two, three, five, and six, all those in favor? Opposed, that's carried unanimously. We'll now move on to item number seven, and we'll start with the first piece. Actually, we'll do that last. So we'll deal with Lost and Found Theater first. Actually, we don't have to deal with that one, because it's withdrawn. We'll deal with B first, which is the Healing of Seven Generations, that'd be increased from 1,000 cash to 2,000 cash, and a recorded vote. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Well, next will be Irish Real Life Festival, in the amount of 4,000 cash. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Next, the Royal Medieval Fair, in the amount of $1,500 cash. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Night Shift Place Hacking Festival, the shifts that have been, the shifts to night shift. All those in favor? Oh, sorry, vote first. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. The list of Tier One grant processes, please vote. That's carried unanimously. The first part, the very first part of the report, that community grants Tier Two in the amount of 1,61, 736, be approved as outlined in Appendix A. the amount of 161,736 be approved as outlined in Appendix A. Councillor Davy, you want to have a question? And that's carried unanimously. And before I take the vote on that last one, councillor Davy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to be clear on this one, I, I will not be supporting this, this part of the amendment. I do think it's appropriate that we do have surplus funds from Tier Two, as councillor Marsh intends to bring forward an alternative motion that those surplus funds do go to Canada 154 this year. I think it's also important to note this does in no way affect the Tier Two grant funding on a go-forward basis. It actually will, that funding will be secured in future years, but I think it's in appropriate use. So again, I would encourage fellow members to not support this.
Okay, so we'll deal with the recommendation that's before us. So if you want to support what's in front of us, you would vote yes. If you want to not support it in order to support councillor Marsh's subsequent motion, then you vote no. Those in favor, those opposed, and that does not carry, councillor Marsh.
Thank you, Mayor Vervanovic. So I'm putting forward the amendment that the outstanding balance of $24,818 remaining in the account be posted to special events for the purpose of spending on the organizing and execution of our Canada Day celebrations. To add a bit of context as to why, we've shifted gears this year, instead of the BIA leading that, the organizing and executing of that event, our, the city is going to be doing that. We've secured, our, our team is an expert team in organizing and executing these events, and we will have some cost savings because of it. However, unfortunately, we were unable to be successful in receiving grants from the federal and the provincial government for the, these celebrations, despite the fact that it is the sesquenntennial celebration. And so the BIA will be, will be spending a significant portion for this event towards, towards the city, but the city will still have a shortfall if we do not use this, these funds for this year's celebration.
Thank you. Councillor Fernandez.
I just, I, I appreciate the clarification from councillor Marsh, because I wasn't sure if this was just going sort of in a general fund. So I want to make sure I completely understand what you're saying. The BIA usually does, sponsors the Canada Day celebrations, but because we want to do more, and we did not receive any grants from both provincial or federal, as we had requested, we want to use, add additional funds to what the BIA is using.
Thank you. Councillor Marsh.
Sorry if I wasn't clear. This year, for 2017, for the first time, the City of Kitchener will be the lead organizer for the event. In previous years, for the last five years, it's been the BIA who has been the lead organizer in securing the talent, securing the contract with the provider of the fireworks, et cetera. And the, it was decided at the, through discussions between the two parties and at the BIA board level, that it would be more efficient for our special events team to be able to execute this event, because that's, that's what they are, they, they do. You know, Jeff Young, one of our leads, has contacts in the industry and was able to secure, you know, high-quality entertainment already for this year, despite a high level of competition for, for talent. Because really, a lot of communities throughout Canada are receiving extra funds for their celebrations, and for some reason, we were overlooked this year. We, we were lucky in previous years. I'm not saying that we need to do something extra special, and that's why we need to have these extra funds. I'm saying that if we want to have the, the event be on budget for this year, we would need these extra funds. Thank you.
Okay, so do I have a second for councillor Marsh's motion? Councillor Davy? And that's carried unanimously. Okay, we will now move on to Finance and Corporate Services, councillor Davy.
Thank you. It's been moved by myself and seconded by councillor Dave Schneider that the nine items of Finance and Corporate Services Committee be adopted.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, opposed, oh, sorry, oh, that's good, opposed, that's carried. Just getting worried I missed the conflict. Councillor Galloway-Silak, you are going to bring in Planning and Infrastructure Services?
That I am. It's moved by myself and seconded by councillor Etherington, that the RENS be brought forward to today's meeting, and that we defer the other item to April 3.
And are you bringing in RENS with the revised recommendation? Council will also note that there is correspondence on your desks from Devry Smith and Frank, who was the delegation that, that appeared at committee two weeks ago. There are a few people in the queue, councillor Fernandez.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about the, the change in the recommendation, because we heard very sincerely from our delegation who is sitting here today about the hard work that was done and how they supported the building heights, the front yard setbacks. And, and I'm afraid that we're getting a little bit loosey-goosey on what has been recommended, what has, the work that has been done. So maybe either Mr. May, and I see Ms. Osterfeldt in, in the gallery, maybe somebody can help me and the rest of council understand why this additional recommendation.
Who wants to take that? Ms. Osterfeldt? Okay, welcome.
Thank you. So through you, Mr. Mayor. It's staff's opinion that the recommendation isn't watered down, it actually is, the wording in the final recommendation through the consultant does allow for the flexibility, and it's just some clarification on that.
So, I mean, how, how far are we going with this additional flexibility? Are we, are we saying we're going to take each situation on its individual merit? Or are we going to be holding true to what the work that was done by the consultant and, and staff and, and the, and the stakeholder group?
It's the intention of staff, if it's, if it goes, if it's approved by council tonight, that the, that the principles that are in the report are upheld through the review of Crosby. With that, we still want to maintain the intent, and it would be, we would do that through drafting of the actual zoning, so the zoning, we still have to draft zoning that applies within the study area. And so we have to just look at the language that we use to make sure that it's, it is form-based, so for example, with the front yard setbacks, that it does relate to the two houses on either side. The flexibility lies in, in the fact that the houses on either side might be at different setbacks.
So then we would be doing an averaging?
That is correct.
Okay. I'm just not sure that I want too much flexibility. I mean, flexibility is very important as we move through different areas of the city, but we've done so much work on this, and we, we've seen some of the buildings on our tour that really were blatantly different and substantially impacted the neighborhood. I just don't want this flexibility to open that door at all to that, those kind of changes.
So I, so I think councillor Fernandez, what we heard staff say, if I heard them correctly, is this isn't changing the flexibility, this is simply providing additional clarification in terms of the language with the, the further details to, to be developed through the Crosby process. Just so that we're clear on that. Councillor Etherington, you were next.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I would apologize for being away March 6 when the committees looked at this, so I, I hope I don't repeat too much. Ms. Osterfeldt, I think your people have done an excellent job. However, I would respectively disagree with you. Surely, after such a long and thorough Ian study period, we owe it to the public who participated in the study that we honor the recommendations they and your planners supported related to height and setbacks. Why are we so reluctant to approve the original recommendation without this second recommendation? We had almost 400 people participating in this. Between March 2016, February 2017, those people contribute, contributed according to your study about 300 hours, and now we're diluting this whole process, in my opinion. So I would ask you, why are we doing that?
Mr. May?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, but, but I have to jump in here. I don't see this as any dilution of any process. Staff are as strongly behind the recommendations of the RENS study as they were before committee. Nothing, my understanding, and Janine can confirm this, nothing is going to change in how staff will handle the recommendations of this study. We heard a lot about flexibility at committee, and so to try to give a greater sense of confidence to council and to the stakeholders, we've written this in. Staff would treat this the same today as they would have two weeks ago.
Well, Mr. May, in all due respect, I totally disagree with you. I see this as a dilution and an erosion of what everyone worked so hard to achieve. And I cannot understand further delay of two of the most important points in this whole process. Like, how much did we pay the consultant, Meridian, to produce this report and recommendations? Why did we bother?
Okay, that's, I think that's a rhetorical question and not, not a question for staff.
Okay, one final question.
Okay, what's your point of order, councillor Marsh?
When, when our deputy C A O gives a clear statement about a fact, and someone mentioned alternative facts earlier this evening, we, that doesn't, that, that does not, that is not part of our definition here at the City of Kitchener. That, that is not part of our vocabulary. We heard a fact from our deputy C A O, and the fact that you disagree, that our, the councillor on the floor is disagreeing with that, is, is just a factor of the fact, that he was away during the whole discussion, and if he had read the report more carefully, he would have seen that the fact is still valid.
Okay. I appreciate your comments, councillor Marsh, but you have your opinion, I have mine, and you have a time to express that opinion.
Okay, councillor Etherington?
I got one final question. If I could ask the question without interruption. Ms. Osterfeldt, or, or Michael, when will Crosby be completed? What happens in the meantime while we wait for Crosby to be completed in way of height or setback or?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The existing zoning regulations do apply at present, and they would continue to apply until the new zoning is in place.
Thank you. And I have some comments that I'll make at time of comments. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I will come back to you. Councillor Davy?
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. I, I am happy to see the additional clause, clause here, especially in light of the fact that the, as we've talked about several times, the public feedback was very split. It wasn't in no way unanimous, especially in terms of, of the height of the buildings. So my, my question is, the consultant was fairly clear last week, but I want to make sure we have it, like, I don't necessarily feel the need to amend it at this point, but I want to make sure that we have it, like, on the, on the record here in terms of the, the minutes of the recording. The consultant did indicate that, in terms of the height, that the idea of a two-and-a-half story would still be permissible even within two bung, within two bungalows. Is that, is that clearly the case?
That is correct.
Okay. Is there a possibility, when, when you have that as well, I guess my only other concern would be, is there, and again, without getting into the specific height guidelines, does that necessarily mean that there would be no windows in the basement, for example? No, no natural sunlight in the basement in that scenario? Do you know offhand?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The example on page three of the staff report shows, shows an image of a, of a house that is 7.6 metres in height, and there is, you can see that the ground floor is steps above, so it shows that there is room for basement windows, and then there's still some flexibility above to get that attic space in that example. So that's, that's a real-life example of a house that would, that would fit that.
Okay, very good. Yeah, so that, that's really my only, my only real concern. I'm, I'm comfortable seeing what comes back in terms of Crosby with the setback rules, but yeah, that's my only question, but I would have a comment as well, Mr. Mayor, at the appropriate time.
Okay, councillor Schneider?
Thank you, Mayor Vervanovic. When it comes to the site plan, the pilot project for the site plan, being that this is a pilot project, do we need the $500 fee? I, I just wondering for our developers.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The actual fee could be, would be part of the 2018 budget deliberation on fees, so that would be the choice of, of council, should you choose to apply that requirement.
Okay, yeah, because if this is a pilot project, I, I would be a little concerned that if we're charging the $500 fee and then we decide we're not going to continue with it, that those that have paid the fee, you know, lose out on that, so, thank you.
Okay, councillor Marsh?
Thank you. So just to ask further about the recommended changes that we discussed at length two weeks ago, the, the zoning changes that were recommended by our consultant, would, would any of those have been able to happen more quickly, or were they all already going to be deferred to Crosby?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We did discuss with staff whether there would be a, a way to move them forward quicker. Because we are right now and presently drafting the residential zoning, it doesn't seem like that would be possible, because staff resources are allocated to getting the Crosby drafted and, and go through that public engagement, so to try to do something parallel to that, it didn't seem like the timing would, would work.
Right. So as much as the majority of So as much as the majority of council would, would like to see some of these changes implemented immediately, including the garage, garages required to be detached in the rear yard or attached on the side and recessed, we can't do that tomorrow. We have to wait a little bit longer and we were always going to have to wait a little longer because of staff resources. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. So it's a fact then that we are not delaying the process in any way, shape or form by having a discussion that was delayed. We deferred the decision to, to vote on until tonight. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll move into comments and Council Davy?
Thank you. I will support this now that I've had some additional clarification. I, I think this, there's some great work done here in terms of trying to make sure that infill best matches the neighborhood and immediate neighbors as well. But there's, there needs to be, we have to be careful we don't over-correct. And in that, I mean, we have a principle of if we, if we care about the environment, if we care about affordable housing, we have to go up, not out. And if we, unless we're absolutely clear that there can be, as I've been, as I've been told, we can have two and a half stories with some natural light which makes it a usable space in the basement. Anything other than that, we start essentially downzoning or going out instead of up. So I think we need to be 100% clear on that, but there still is wiggle room in there. For example, when staff's looking at this, if somebody wants to do that max of two and a half stories, then maybe, that means, guess what? No, no nine foot, 10 foot ceilings. You're going to be capped at a, a height of, of a standard eight feet to try and match those adjoining neighbors the best that you can. So I think it's very important, especially in light of the fact that the public input that we received on the height was very split. It was by no, by, by no measures unanimous. In terms of the setbacks, I would like to see a slightly more complicated calculation there as well, and I'm just going from my own anecdotal evidence of where I live. I look out my front yard and either of my neighbors could build a protrusion at the front of, of their home four or five meters before I'd even be able to see it. So why should they go through the additional hoops and costs of hiring a planner and going through a huge process when it's not really going to affect the neighbors? And I'm, and again, I understand that this is built for some extreme examples that was presented to committee earlier on, but I just want to make sure that we're not needlessly burdening people that just want to go through variants that, that won't really affect the neighbors and adding more red tape in the process. So I'm happy to approve it with those, with that qualification and I look forward to seeing what comes back through Crosby.
Council Schneider?
Thank you, Mayor Vravandovic. Thanks, staff. This is a, a lot of work and we are talking here about residential intensification, not residential replacement. And residential intensification can be gentle, it can be adding maybe two more people to, to, to a dwelling, you know? And speaking with Council Ionidus, you know, today, the real estate market is, is pretty tough out there right now and young couples may not be able to purchase a home on their own, but a dwelling where there is a separate living area for the couple and maybe another separate area for parents or another couple could help with that. And so just having that extra flexibility and as Council Davy brought up, the, the ability to have that two and a half story dwelling can help with that.
Any other comments? Council Marsh?
Yeah, I'd just like to add my thanks to the staff and to the project team. We had an outstanding consultation process. We really listened to, to the, the people who were involved in the stakeholder meetings and we had great engagement. I, I felt that the, the ward that I represent, which contains quite a lot of the older established neighborhoods that we were talking about, was, was heard. And, you know, we have, in our city, we were told by the consultant who has looked all across Ontario at different communities, that we have some of the, we have the most older housing stock that's, remains intact of any community he's seen. And so we know that the neighbors in these older neighborhoods are, are interested in have, maintaining their eclectic style, maintaining the front porch culture that we so dearly love and in maintaining a sense of, of neighborly relations that, that can break down when a, a huge monster home gets plunked down in, in between the rest of the homes being much more modest. So it's, it's important that the REINs study go forward. We understand it's the first kick of the can and that we're going to be seeing some modifications down the road, but I personally can't wait for a lot of these changes to be, to be put in place in, in, in our pilot study and to see just exactly how it plays out.
Council Etherington?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. One of my top priorities as a councillor has always been to protect the numerous older established neighborhoods in my ward and other wards for that matter. I oppose any attempt, as I say, to dilute these policies recommended by our planners that will help protect those inner city neighborhoods. I also oppose a situation where we create, in my opinion, justified public cynicism when we go to huge lengths to involve 400 people from numerous older neighborhoods, not just in my ward, and then at best tinker around or at worst disregard what those participants and planners want in order, in my opinion, to appease a few development interests. I would urge councillors to avoid further delay and dilution of this important study and its recommendations. So I will not support creating a loophole that this second paragraph does. And I would ask, as we vote for this, that we separate these two recommendations, because I fully agree with the first one and completely oppose the suggested delay and the creation of that, to use the cute word flexibility.
Okay, there don't appear to be any others in the queue, so I'll make my comments. First of all, I think we need to be absolutely clear and it's unfortunate, Council Etherington, that you, you're seeming to not want to choose to listen to what two of our professional staff have said to you and, and, and said publicly, on the public record with media and, and, and staff present recording this, that this is not changing the intent of the recommendation, it is simply adding additional clarity. I want to go back to the, the REINs report in, in general and I want to thank staff for all of the work that's been done to, to bring this, to this point today. And I also want to thank the three members from the community who have been part of the process and I know there's others that have been involved as well, but the three of you have probably been the, the diehards through, from the beginning to the end. I want to thank you for being here again this evening as we deal with this and move this recommendation forward for the respective sections in the city. This is something that I believed was, was very important when I ran for mayor, because one of the things that we heard from people was concern around dealing with, with change when it comes to intensification. And when we looked at cities like Edmonton and others that have actually dealt with this, outside of the emotion of an individual application, in the long run, it actually has helped the process. And in, in those cities, in fact, they're now into round two of a sort of a version 2.0 document of, of their equivalent to REINs, because they've learned a lot through that first process and are making changes. But again, it is taking it out of the emotion of an individual application and hopefully will make it a lot easier for us, because I've sat around this, this horseshoe where philosophically I've heard, you know, members of council say, we believe in intensification and we want to see this happen, but then as soon as there's a particular application and we see, you know, some concerns, you know, coming in, into the debate from neighborhoods, some would call it nimbyism, we all of a sudden back off on our principle around believing in intensification. And hopefully, this will now help us going forward, because both the residents and those potentially interested in, in developing have a better understanding of, of what's viable and what's a go and, and what likely won't be a go. And so I am really pleased that, that this is here. I'm looking forward to see what we learn from it moving forward and, and how it will further evolve and, and shape our work in this regard in, in years to come, because the reality is, intensification has to happen. And, and we need to find ways to make it as, as painless as possible for, for residents going forward. So it... No comment? We, we're voting for them separately? Okay. Council Fernandois?
Just requesting a recorded vote.
Yep, that's fine. Okay, so with that, we will deal with the, the two clauses. I've been asked that I deal with the second clause first, that's fine. So that's, that additional flexibility be explored for building height and front yard setback rules through the comprehensive review of the zoning bylaw. All those in favor? Those opposed? And the motion carries and now we'll deal with the first motion. And that is carried unanimously and in both cases, it's with the noted conflicts. Okay, thank you very much. We will now move on. Yes, going to that next. So we can deal with item number two. Those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Heritage Kitchener, Council Gazola, I understand you're bringing that one forward?
Yeah, it's been moved by myself and seconded by Councilionetsky. Your Heritage Committee recommends as follows and it's, I, I won't read it all, but I do want to read some parts of it. It's an item that was discussed at Heritage Committee, dealing with a private members bill that looks to provide some assistance to people that are trying to restore and maintain, restore and renovate heritage properties. And it reads that whereas Bill C 323, an act to amend the income tax act, which proposes to create a 20% income tax credit for the rehabilitation of historic buildings, has the potential to broadly affect homeowners and the development slash construction industry and positively impact the economy, job creation, carbon reduction through the support of the rehabilitation of historic, historic buildings, be it resolved that the City of Kitchener endorses private members bill, Bill number C 323, an act to amend the income tax act, and be it finally resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the Prime Minister, to the Minister of Environment and Climate Change, to the Minister of Finance and to the private minister, member, Honorable Peter Van Loon, Loan, and to all local area MPs and municipalities. And by that, I would like to point, it would be to the A M O and to F C, F C M and also to the National Trust for Canada. I'd ask you to support that.
Okay, thank you. That's been moved and seconded. Council Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I support strongly the, the recommendation for, for endorsing this motion as we endeavor to celebrate and, um, our, you know, property, properties that are of heritage significance. The ownership of those properties should not be a burden and I think measures such as this allows those property owners to take some additional benefit and ensure that they take every step to preserve the property of its heritage characteristics. So I support this very strongly. Thanks.
Thank you. Council Ionidus?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Vravandovic. I, I agree with, with the comments made by my colleague, Council Singh. I mean, I think it's, this has been a big proponent on, on when we're dealing with heritage that it, heritage is, if we're going to impose certain things on private individuals, other levels of government, including ourselves, need to step up and, and give them the support that they, that, that I think is rightfully so, because we are putting extra burden on, on, on those properties.
Okay, thank you. Those are the comments. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. We'll now move on to unfinished business. Council Gazola?
I bring forward the motion that, that I brought forward several months ago, dealing with shopping carts. Staff have produced, have done a lot of homework and have done a, a lot of research and have come back with a, in my, a very, very good piece of, of legislation. And I would ask council to support it. I have one, one point that I would like to change slightly and that deals with asking companies that are involved, retailers, the way the, the report that's being put forward asks that if, in case of problems, they'd be asked to bring forward or to bring forward a plan that they have for looking after this problem. But basically, we're asking everyone to prepare a plan to deal with this issue and I want to just go one step forward and ask and, and legislate that that plan be filed with the city so that it's available for everyone to be able to, to access what's supposed to be done. I think this, adding the additional requirement that it be filed with the city, I don't think it's an onerous amount of work for, for the corporations or individuals, retailers that are involved. And, and it, they do have to come up with a plan anyhow, they have to have a plan. We're just asking that it be filed so that it's available for us to follow up on when we do have complaints concerning the issues. And if it's, it's, if it's filed as a public document, that they be, anyone be able to access that information without a fee and that, I can see it also that if those plans are filed with the city, that if individuals, residents do approach their ward councillor, that the councillor can go and see the plans and see and deal with the issue and quite frankly, it, it will, could even, as a result of that, save, save time of our property standards people, that a lot of these issues could be dealt with individual members of council. So I would ask council to support- So I would ask council to support. It's a very good plan, and I then, again, want to compliment staff for all the work they've done. It's a touchy subject, it's been around for many years, and they've done a tremendous amount of research, and I think they've laid the groundwork. Now it's up to us to really support it.
Okay, so Counselor Gazola, you're moving it as listed?
But I do want to add the requirement that the plans be filed with the city, not just be prepared.
Okay. Well, first of all, is there a second or further recommendation? Seconded by Counselor Fernandez. Before I go into the list of people, maybe staff can just, Ms. McNeil, you can just quickly comment the proposed change. Is it, does that extra work for you? Does it, is it any concerns with it?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That option is something that we could consider. It would be a little bit more work for staff up front. I think what we tried to do was to have as little impact on those retailers that are already doing a good job, which was why we proposed it the way we did, but it would certainly be something that we could consider.
Okay, and that's all you're asking, Counselor Gazola? Or you're asking that they have to do it? Staff are saying they want to consider it, and I just want to be clear that...
Well, I, what do they mean that they, what do you mean that you will consider it? You want to look further into it? I mean, I want, what I'm asking for is that these plans be filed with the city.
Okay.
I do suspect in the commencement of this, there might be some additional work for our staff, but I'm hoping that in the fullness of time, in the long term, it'll be less work for our staff.
Ms. McNeil?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That is something that would be doable by staff.
Okay, thank you. So we've got four people in the queue. Counselor Schneider?
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. This is something that's been dear to my heart. I looked into it very deeply just after being elected, when I received the call, did some research of my own at Zayer's, near, in my ward. I like what this shopping cart plan has in it. I would just like to ask Gloria if, not as part of this plan, but maybe as some suggestions, that we could also look into an educational portion to this. Most of these carts are removed by customers who live close to a store, but they don't have the means of having a vehicle, so their only way to get the groceries home is to use the cart. If we could have some sort of educational portion that would ask that they be returned to the store to keep our neighborhood sidewalks and parks and boulevards safe and clear, that would be great. Some assurance that the call to the store gets to the manager. We have to realize that grocery stores, department stores can get very busy, and the call that comes into the store may be answered, maybe by an employee at a courtesy desk who's very busy serving customers. They may take the information down quickly, and it may get missed getting to the manager. So maybe suggesting the stores have some sort of easily identified form, labeled shopping cart pickup request with the address information that can be given to the manager so they can look after that. And then a list of the stores and phone numbers. I've already put this together. If you'd like it, you could have it. It's the stores, their addresses, their phone number. If we could get that to maybe your bylaw staff and also our contact center, so when people call the contact center, they could call the store and let them know that they have a shopping cart that needs to be retrieved. As I learned in my discussions with the manager at Zayer's, that a call to the store will get a shopping cart retrieved much faster than a call to City Hall. It's something that they want. These shopping carts that they use are worth $700 each. Once the wheel's locked, they have to be unlocked by a $2,000 piece of equipment, and they get maintained every two weeks. So there's quite a lot of, you know, process that goes into this. So I, you know, I don't, I think our stores do want to be responsible on this. I don't want to put all the pressure on them. It's not their fault that the shopping carts go off their premises, but I think this is fair, and I think they'll buy into this.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Yanetsky?
Yeah, a question to Ms. McNeil. When I read this, and the shopping carts here are concerned being in traffic hazards, beating sidewalks, street maintenance, with the public, I've seen them in ditches and greenways and parks, just sort of abandoned, and I can express, understand the concern of dealing with this. But what about if there's a shopping cart that's on private property? I mean, they take the cart and they go down to where they live in a townhouse or apartment, they leave it at the back, and then eventually it gets stolen and then just removed. Are we dealing with private properties as well?
Ms. McNeil?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we currently do deal with those on private property already. We just deal with them under our Lot Maintenance Bylaw as waste.
So you'd remove them, so that, the responsibility is still falling on the owners? It could be the retailer?
We would require the property owner to connect with the store or either return them. So ultimately, it does become the responsibility of that private property owner to ensure that they get removed off their property.
Okay, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate also where Counselor Gazola is going to add a little more into this, but, you know, when I really think of it, the, and leading up to the next question on this, is that the stores have done a very good job, as best as they can under the circumstances, of putting little signs in the carts saying it's not, you're not supposed to remove them from the site. They got wheels that lock up for certain, you know, stores, or you got to put a coin in there to take the cart, and all that stuff, and I think that's good. But really, when the cart is removed from the property and is taken down the street to the person's home, that's really theft. They've stolen a piece of, you know, property that's owned by the store, and, you know, they maybe do it innocently, but basically it's theft. Isn't that something that's, something that should be dealt with by the police instead?
Ms. McNeil? And if you can just leave your mic on, please.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. If there were to be a criminal charge laid of theft, that would be the police that would deal with that. However, it's been my experience that generally the store owners aren't looking to have people charged for this type of thing. So that would have to be a discussion between the store owners and the police.
Sorry, speak a little louder. The last part, I didn't quite catch it.
Sorry, that would have to be a discussion that would have to take place between that retailer and the police to request that those type of charges be laid.
And that's the reluctance, because the, that's a customer that comes and spends a hundred bucks on groceries, et cetera, and then don't have wheels, so they try to take it home, and then you want to charge them, and sort of a catch-22 situation. And I don't think they're going to do that, but, I mean, that's what we have here. Yet, if you go into the store and you steal a can of, you know, soup or something like, and you walk out of the store, then they'll arrest you for theft, for something that's even smaller in terms of value as opposed to the shopping cart. So I really boggles my mind to understand why they don't move forward on this and take it as a crime, as opposed to just dealing with it like, well, we'll try to do our best. So that's why, just wondering whether we should take this a step further. That's where I'm coming from.
Well, I suspect what they're trying to do is find a balance between, you know, not losing them and not losing people as customers, because obviously, obviously the people who are taking them are people who have challenges in the sense that they don't have their own vehicles and other things, so they're trying to assist those people. Counselor Etherington?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Ms. McNeil. How many complaints did you deal with last year for the total year?
We dealt with approximately 11 complaints.
11? And this contemplates a maximum fine of $10,000? What's your opinion on that kind of fine? I know that your people go out of your way to educate people, and so it's extremely unlikely that anyone would ever be fined $10,000, but that's what's going to be in the bylaw, am I correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Municipal Act bylaws generally fall in the range of $5,000 to $10,000 for a maximum penalty, so we've just tried to keep it at that for consistency.
Those 11 cases that you mentioned, did your people spend a lot of time working on those cases?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Some stores are more problematic than others, some are quite quick in being responsive, some are not so responsive, so in terms of doing something like this, it would certainly give us the teeth to be able to deal with those that aren't being responsive.
Right, thank you.
Counselor Adnais?
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. My question is, okay, last year was 11. Do you have any further statistics?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I don't, and I could get them if need be. What happens is, is because we don't have a bylaw that's specific to shopping carts, we just capture it under our Lot Maintenance Bylaw when they do come in, so it's pretty onerous to go through each and every one of those to try to find if they were actually a shopping cart complaint or not.
Okay, so just on your best educated guess, is it pretty similar every year?
I think it is pretty similar every year.
Okay. And as far as this plan that we want to put, implement on them, do you know what the costs are for these management plans?
So what we're proposing is that, we're not, we're not actually proposing a specific management plan, we're just leaving it up to each store to determine what's appropriate for them. So if we were to get a complaint about that store, we would go to them and ask them for their management plan and what it is they're doing. So if they already had a locking wheel mechanism in place, or somebody that went around and picked up their carts, I think we would consider that, that they're doing what they can in order to try to deal with the issue, and we're not looking to penalize those people.
Okay, so through your experience, then, it sounds like they're already doing this, correct?
Many of them are already doing something, yes.
So if they're already doing this, why are we looking at this and putting a heavy hand on them in a way like...
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think the intent of this is just to give us some teeth to deal with the people that aren't doing something or that don't respond when we've asked them to go pick up carts.
Okay. I don't know, 11 complaints to me doesn't seem like a lot when you look at the amount of shopping carts in the whole city. But I'll wait till comments.
Counselor Marsh?
Oh, one more, actually, one more thing, too. Point of clarification, when a member of council brings forward any amendment, isn't it supposed to be written?
His amendment? Technically, yes.
I would like to see it written, please.
Okay, that's fine. Counselor Gazola, if you can write that out. Counselor Marsh, you have the floor.
Thank you. Oh.
Counselor Gazola?
Okay, so just a couple of questions for you, Ms. McNeil. If a store would have a couple of repeat offenders that might take their carts as a regular habit, would that be a consideration that you might have in going more easy on the store owner? You know, like, if they keep finding carts at the same location again and again, is it, is it the onus entirely on the store owner to prevent that from happening, or would we, for example, have you considered having a parallel section of the bylaw that would find people who just won't stop taking the cart home?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think what the intent was, was that we could make that phone call and ask them to go pick it up at the location where it's been called in, and they would be reactive to that. If they had somebody that was chronically taking carts, I think that would have to be a police issue that they could deal with them and have them go speak with them.
Okay, so, great, that would be then referred to the police. Another question, just about independent grocery stores. We do still have a couple, and I'm just wondering, when you were designing this bylaw, did you have a chance to consult with any independent small-scale grocery store owners to see their perspective on how this bylaw might impact them?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We did, but what staff and I did was, we went through and tried to come up with every single retailer throughout the City of Kitchener that we could think of that provided shopping carts, and 48 letters went out to each of those retailers advising that we were considering a bylaw and asking for their feedback. So we only heard back from two.
Oh, were either of them small-scale independent?
One of them was small, yes.
Okay, so, well, I would just ask then, are you planning to, you know, this maximum fine of $10,000 for businesses that don't comply, it sounds like it would be easier to swallow for a large-scale chain than, you know, a central fresh market. So is there, are you going to be able to find a way to consider that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. As with all of our bylaws, there is that maximum fine amount, and we would never ask for that kind of money on a first offense. So that would be something that we would ask for if we were continuously having issues with the same retailer and getting no response. And that would be, I would imagine, quite a ways down the road.
Okay. I do have a concern about that. I appreciate your perspective on it and that, that you see that number as more of down-the-road, not likely-to-ever-happen kind of scenario, but because it's written in stone in our bylaw, or about to be, I'm just concerned about the optics of that for our independent grocery stores. Otherwise, I do fully support this bylaw.
Okay, those are all the questions. I have a couple, and I just want to be really absolutely clear on what we're asking here and what I think the amendment is asking for. So if I understand what's being proposed here is, we'll put a bylaw in place. The bylaw would, in theory, require everyone to, not in theory, it would require everyone to manage their own shopping carts, but we really wouldn't be chasing them down for a plan, as it's proposed right now. We really wouldn't be chasing them down for a plan unless there, unless we're getting successive problems being reported to you, at which point you would actually go to them, ask them for a plan, and ask them to provide you with that.
Correct.
Correct? And so that actually removes any onerous responsibilities around those who are the good operators and not having problems.
That's correct.
Okay. And if we add the amendment to it, as I understand it, the amendment would then require, regardless, everybody, good or bad, to actually go to the, to the point of actually having a formal written document that they would file with you. Is that correct, as you understand it?
Yes, that's correct. It would require everybody to submit one.
And at which point, we're really not sort of creating any space for those who are being responsible operators? Like, we're actually asking them to go to this, to A, be a responsible operator, but also go to this extra piece of work?
Yes.
Okay, cool. I just wanted to be absolutely clear on that. So, Counselor Gazola, do you have the amendment?
Okay. Counselor Gazola, do you have some comments you want to make to it, or...
Yeah, sorry. This would just file right in after the words, retrieval of abandoned carts. And what I have in plan here is not extra work and an onerous burden on these retailers. These retailers, I am sure, already have plans. They, they're in business, they know what they're doing. I'm sure they, I'm, I'm asking that they, if they don't already have it committed to word... I'm sure they, I'm asking that they, if they don't already have it committed to wording that they, I'm sure, refer to, that they take a little bit of time, commit it to wording, and file it with the city clerk. It's not an onerous, it's not an onerous burden on these retailers. It's not, it's not going to cost them a lot of money to do. I'm not asking for them to spend various amounts of money. Okay, now, the question's been thrown out, just as a comment. Yes, I know perhaps our staff are not getting that many complaints. Because people, a lot of people are reluctant to complain. I receive several, several questions, complaints on a monthly basis from a certain portion of the ward that I represent, or other portions of the ward that I represent, that don't have any problems like that. So to those people that I, in the area that I am receiving complaints, it is a problem to them, and they're concerned about it. And it's, it's not a, again, it's not an onerous task, it's not, it's not putting a burden on anyone, and there's, there are no great costs involved. I might just mention for, as an example, close to, in the neighborhood where I reside, the operation there has gone to a great deal of expense just recently to put in a system to look after their carts. I'm not asking a similar type program to be put in all over. They have plans already. That's an expensive asset for them. I'm sure they have plans to look after all of their assets. I'm just trying, I think staff have done a tremendous job on coming up with something that does give them a little bit of teeth when they are trying to follow up on these issues. Right now, there's nothing.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I agree with the last bit, that staff have done a good job in outlining a process that goes to mitigate the issues and concerns that have been expressed to Counselor Gazola. And we've all heard it, probably not, not as frequent. This is an issue that seems to be more of a problem in some locations and not widespread. And because of that reason, the addition, the amendment to the motion that's as recommended from staff, seems to do nothing but add a layer of bureaucracy, simply because the way the staff recommendation is outlined in the report, in my understanding, and I think I heard clarification from Ms. Nick McNeil, that the staff would seek out of having a mitigation plan for locations that are of an issue. We would retain that, we would be able to review that, we will be able to make recommendations to our satisfaction. But why go through the extra steps in creating a requirement for locations that there had been no issues? It just, it makes no sense to me. It requires not only added cost, it does add cost. When operator has to do something beyond their day-to-day operation, it is a cost to them. And it is a cost to us as well in receiving plans from businesses who, from, you know, areas that we're not hearing complaints from, but reviewing those plans. I'm guessing we're not just receiving it for the sake of receiving it, we would have to have staff review it and document it and probably retain those plans as well. So just a lot of extra layers, all for nothing, when simply it seems to be the best, as outlined by staff, that we deal by case-by-case scenario, and require a plan to be in place where there are problems being referred to us. I will support the staff recommendation, because I think that's a reasonable recommendation, but the amendment doesn't seem to serve any extra benefit.
Counselor Adenatys.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. I just have a little bit of concern about this, and the reason why I'm concerned about it is, we have the industry that's, you know, that's in their best interest to protect their investments. And again, these are, and these are expensive items for them. And I know Counselor Schneider has done a lot, a lot of work on this, and the reality is, why can't we just get phone, get the, give the phone number to the store and say, "Come pick up your cart"? Like, I mean, like, I don't understand why we have to be redundant, and they're already doing all this stuff. Why are we going to just do this little extra work when our bylaw staff is already busy as it is, for really 11 complaints? Which is, you could just hand them the phone call, call the store. You know, we preach about everyone being good neighbors, why are we doing that here with this case? You know, I just don't want to, I just don't want to see us be in a nanny state for just carts, like, and then having the imposition of having a $10,000 fine. It's there, and it's there to scare people, but whether we do it or not, it's still there. And I think that is pretty heavy-handed, so I won't support any of this. I think we should just, I think they're doing their work. It's no fault of their own that people are taking their property. I think they're going and spending thousands of dollars to lock these wheels. I don't, I don't see why we need to add further to this. I think they're doing the best that they can, and really, all it is is a simple phone call.
Counselor Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. I can't support the amendment, because I believe the vast majority of the operators are very responsible. The stores that I visited spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on an deterrent system that locks the wheels. That costs a lot of money. The shopping carts are $700 each. They want those carts back if they're not on their property. So the goal is to get the carts returned. Any plan that would be asked for by the individual store would have to be set by their corporate office anyway. It wouldn't be up to the individual store to set their own shopping plan. Let's just do some education and ask for those carts that are removed to be returned. And this is not a huge issue. As Counselor Adenatys pointed out, there's been 11 complaints. We don't need to overkill this.
Counselor Anetski.
Well, there may be 11 complaints that the city's received, but there's shopping carts all over the place, and they are probably, the store owners will probably get notified, and they could probably get hundreds of calls during the course of the year, the various stores, depending on where they're located and who the issues are with. My question, there's one question I just didn't follow through with, and that is, you said, you sent out 48 letters to all the retailers that you could best identify, and two replies. If we pass this bylaw tonight, whichever way, whichever amendments or additions that are there, are we going to have a backlash from the retailers in the end? Because I don't see any of them here in the council chamber expressing any concern, or they just think, "Well, there's just another frivolous bylaw. We don't care. We'll do our best." And then if this bylaw comes into place, all of a sudden, they may be really, really upset. I don't know. What did the letters say in terms of, were they invited to come to this meeting, retailers, or not?
Through the mayor. There was not an invitation specifically to attend council. The letters indicated that council had asked us to review it and look at proposing a bylaw in regards to shopping cart, and to put some regulations around shopping carts that are being taken off of those properties. We did invite them to comment and provide us with feedback, to let us know whether they supported or had concerns with it. And as I mentioned, we only had two that responded.
Right. Okay. I appreciate that. So if, you know, I hear comments around the horse, you're saying that, "Well, they're doing their best job, that, you know, they've got locks and use coin-operated carts," and they are doing a good job. I'm not disagreeing it. But if, but why are we discussing this? If they're doing such a good job, we have an issue here that's been brought forward. And so there are still carts out there. I see them all the time. Not every day, but you have to go, as you're wandering, you know, going by whatever you are going to, you'll probably see one abandoned here, another one abandoned there. So they are still taking them over the line, you know, even though you can put a coin on there, you can still take it away. So it costs you a quarter to take the cart away. So people are still going to continue doing it. They can buy their own little individual shopping carts, you know, and have their own personal ones, the two-wheelers, and they can take that with them and go grocery shopping. But I find, they find this to be more convenient. I'm, I think this is just not, doesn't have any teeth on it. If we just support it just the way the staff has presented it, I think what Counselor Gazola has brought forward is going to give some more ammunition, because I think the retailers, even though they say they could be doing it, I, why do we still have shopping carts all over the place, still being abandoned?
Counselor Fernandez.
I certainly think that having a plan is going to not only benefit our bylaw staff, but I think it will benefit the business. Some of them obviously have done some cost-benefit analysis on the cost of having to retrieve all these carts, and maybe they've made some kind of a management plan, and maybe they haven't. Just being able to sit down and think about this in a formalized manner will probably bring to their attention how often they're having to receive, sorry, retrieve carts. What I think is a piece that is important here is the education that I think the public needs to know. And by having some kind of a management plan, that maybe the stores can use to say to their customers, "This is what the cost is for us to retrieve a cart. If you remove it from our parking lot, then return it." And that may be the carrot and stick that will work with the public. This is a great first step, and, you know, we're talking about it, so there was an article in the newspaper this weekend, so this is good public education. So I'd really like to see both the amendment and the original motion be supported. I think the businesses, the grocery stores, the businesses that have grocery, have carts in general, because Walmart has carts and they don't always have groceries, will see this as a great opportunity to do public education and see the cost-benefit to having a management plan in their, on their site.
Any more comments?
I will support the recommendation, well, sorry. The motion that's on the floor right now is actually this revised one, so I won't be supporting this motion. If it fails, I will support the recommendation coming through in staff's report. I prefer to approach this in a step manner, and not to penalize those who are doing the responsible thing in the first place. I think the revised motion is just taking it a step further than is necessary for the level of problems that we have. If we're seeing that the level of problems increases in the future, or we're not getting cooperation, then, you know, I think we could take a next step in the future. But I think what was originally proposed is sufficient, in my view. So, yes, recorded vote has been called? No, so it's not on, because his, the motion that's on the floor is, includes the amendment. Yeah. So if it fails, then we'll deal with the original recommendation. It's really not an amendment, because it's his motion.
Turn on your mic, I've given you lots of space.
If this motion should fail, I will, I will move the one that the staff...
The voting turned on? No?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Just like clarification, our understanding is that staff's recommendation is that a business, or, excuse me, a shopping cart plan would only be required for those businesses that are having a problem, whereas Counselor Gazola's amendment is that all businesses would have a shopping cart management plan, and that plan would then be filed with the clerk. We just want clarification, please.
Ms. McNeil.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I do believe that's what Counselor Gazola's looking for.
But it's not an amendment, it's Counselor Gazola's motion. Yeah, the whole thing. So it's been moved and seconded, so what we're voting on is what's in front of us plus that, with that additional paragraph. Okay? Everyone clear? Those opposed? Motion does not carry. Counselor Gazola.
I move what's in the staff report.
Do I have a second, or? Counselor Fernandez? Recorded vote? All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. New business? Any new business?
Counselor Davy.
Thank you. I'll try and be brief, I know we're dragging on this evening, but just wanted to make a note that Kitchener is now up and running. We have our online billing for the city of Kitchener, you can pay for your utilities. It's, as we're still in early phases, I understand, there will be a full awareness campaign coming up, so I would encourage my fellow members of council to spread the word, because as I recall, we currently spend, I would say, waste several hundred thousand dollars a year, actually probably close to $700,000 a year in billing, in paper, delivering paper bills, which is not only a very poor use of funds, but also very bad for the environment. So those of you that want to spread the word, there's a couple of things to note I would point out. The first is that if people that sign up by June, by the end of June, there is going to be 10 draws for $250 off of your utility bill, which is a bit of incentive for folks to get out there and do it. And I actually did my registration over the weekend. It was, it's quite simple. All you have to do is go to the city of Kitchener, well, first grab a copy of your bill, and then go to the city of Kitchener's website and just type in "e-billing" in the search field, and it will be the first, it'll be the first one that comes up, okay? So again, highly recommend it. Let's spend those dollars in much better places, okay?
Okay. Thank you for sharing that with the viewing audience. Counselor Fernandez.
So I have a couple of questions on items 10 and 11, which are for information only. I know that's in the committee of whole. At what point of time would I be moved those into a discussion?
Under committee of the whole.
Okay. I'll do that then.
So just two quick things. Probably the biggest thing at the region, two things to report on. The switch to the new garbage program for the first two weeks has gone from the reports that we have that have been given to regional councils, has gone relatively well. That doesn't mean that there hasn't been some hiccups, but switching to a new provider and a new method, all at the same time, you would anticipate that there may be some challenges, but overall, it's gone quite well. And the other piece is the final periods for initial input into Phase Two of the LRT routing is coming up, and so anybody who wants to have input into that should do that sooner rather than later. And finally, the last item is just a reminder that our State of the City speech will be taking place on April the 4th at the... on April the 4th at the Standing Park Community Center. And any people in the viewing audience who might be interested in attending can purchase a ticket at the Greater KW Chamber of Commerce website, and the proceeds go to the Kitchener-Wattiloo Community Foundation. Questions and answers? Bylaws first reading. It's been moved by Counselor Davy, seconded by Counselor Yonetsky. That leave be given the mover and seconded to introduce the bylaws listed on the agenda and that the same be taken as read a first time. Instead, refer to the committee of the whole. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. It's been moved by Counselor Etherington. The council resolved itself into committee of the whole. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Counselor Etherington, over to you. Oh, sorry. I thought I clicked you on. Go ahead.
Would be the second reading of bylaws. I need someone to move the, thank you. Who's in favor? And against? So that's passed. Then we move to the items on committee of the whole agenda. Someone want to move number one?
You've dubbed it number one already.
Oh, I'm sorry. Number two? Moved by Counselor Singh. Those in favor? Those opposed? Item number three. A mover for that one? Counselor Davy?
Counselor Davy has a question.
Okay. Counselor Davy?
Thank you. Just one question. What happens at the end of the 30-day extension? Does, would this come back to committee or council? Would the, does the applicant have the opportunity to apply for another extension? What happens?
Apparently Counselor Fernandez can answer that.
Sure.
The, there will be, there will be no, there will be no extension. This has been an issue that's come back and forth a number of times to the dog appeal committee. They will, the Humane Society will then go in and remove the dog, is my understanding.
Okay. I, can I, if I could ask Counselor Fernandez and Counselor Schneider, both on this committee, could I ask their opinion?
Counselor Schneider is not.
Or, sorry, Counselor Marsh, or Counselor Gazola, that's right. Could I ask, just ask the opinion on having this come back? Do you think it's a good idea, to be frank, for this to come back to this council if the dog is in place at that time? Or are you comfortable with it as is?
Both Counselor Schneider, myself, and then myself again, have listened to this appeal actually three times. So I don't think it should come back. I think that the committee has made their decision in the best interest of the public at large. And Mr. Rouge understands his commitment with regards to this decision.
Okay. Thank you for that.
And a mover on that item? Counselor Fernandez. Those in favor? Anyone against? That's passed. Item number four, appointments to the Downtown Action and Advisory Committee. It's moved by Counselor Marsh. Those in favor? Anyone against? Thank you. Item number five, energy cogeneration project. Moved by Counselor Iannadis.
Counselor Fernandez has a question.
Sorry.
With regards to the comments on page 5-9, the, it talks about the site plan of approval. And it states that the city would like to understand the visual impact of the project with respect to a number of cultural heritage landscapes, as well as I have some concerns with related to the impact to residents across, sorry, kind of upstream and also upwind on Mill Park with regards to smell and odor and noise from the bio solids. So I just need to understand if the questions and the concerns that have already been stated both by the city, but now by myself as a counselor for that ward, if they've been addressed? And if not, how would we do that?
Mr. Redman has a response. Counselor Etherington?
Mr. Redman?
Through the chair. So we can certainly add those additional comments, the application that we submit. My understanding is there is currently flaring that goes on for the biogas. So this would just be capturing the energy from that flaring that happens. And my understanding is also that all the new equipment would be located inside existing structures. So it should be minimal impact from the view. But we can definitely add any comments, and they would be addressed through the process.
Okay. The flaring that would happen, because there's not any of that now happening at that location, will the residents, both, you know, across the river in Counselor Gazola's ward, as well as my ward, will they be able to see the flaring? Will it, I mean, we need an education component as part of this process. Will that happen?
Through the mayor's. My understanding is they do burn off the gas that's there already. So that is the flaring that's currently going on. This would be capturing the energy from that system.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that clarification.
Someone want to move item five? The mayor moves number five. Those in favor? Those against? Thank you. Item six, CAO, I'm sorry, Compass Kitchener Advisory Committees. The work plan moved by Counselor Fernandez. Those in favor? Those against? Thank you. Item, thank you. Counselor Galloway Seelock moves number seven. Counselor Singh, you have a question?
Counselor Gazola has a question. Okay.
Those in favor of item seven? Against? Thank you. Item eight, natural gas storage. Moved by Counselor Singh. Those in favor?
No, Counselor Gazola has a question.
Counselor Gazola.
Yeah, I have several questions about this. The Energy Board has awarded Union Gas, allowed them to charge us 20% more. How do we, what benefits are there to us from these changes that are being made?
Ms. Fletcher has a response.
What are we paying for? That's
So through the chair, this is an existing contract that's integral to Kitchener Utilities' providing gas service. Through this contract, we're actually getting additional storage capacity, which is of benefit to us. Quite frankly, there are not a lot of other alternatives, though, than for us to go with Union Gas at this point for their underground storage facilities.
No, I appreciate that. I just wanted to know, though, if the Energy Board are allowing them to charge us 20% more, we should be getting something. So if bigger storage, what is our annual purchase of gas currently, roughly? How many cubic meters? What I'm trying to, what I'm trying to figure out is how much, how much of what we buy for a year, how much of it sits in storage? Is storage, I didn't think storage was a very big factor, and yet it's costing us $6 million a year.
Through the chair, I don't have those numbers at hand, and they would fluctuate.
Well, I know, but, okay, I guess I don't need an answer tonight because we have to prove that. But it would be nice to know how much, how, what's our, I have a rough idea what our total purchase is, but how much of it is in storage? And is there anything else we can do?
I can provide that.
Back to you.
Someone want to move item eight? Counselor Iannadis, those in favor? Those against? Excuse me. Go, I'm just going to sleep here. Item number nine is for information only. I had a request for discussion of item 10 and 11.
Nine, 10, and 11.
Nine, 10, and 11. Deal with item nine first.
Well, you need a motion from council to
A motion to discuss those three items or each one? Those three. Someone want to move that?
I'll put that motion forward.
Thank you.
But you don't need one.
In committee, we don't need a second. No. Go ahead, Counselor, Counselor Fernandez. Okay. Vote those in favor, sorry, and against?
Okay. So one quick question on the business plan. Unfortunately, there's, in my copy, there's no page numbers. So I'm going to refer to it as bylaw enforcement, CS03, responsible pet ownership. I noticed that at the end of 2016 that this was delayed, and expected completion is April 2017. That is one month from now. I know that bylaw has been dealing with a number of other issues, but this is something that's pretty important to come forward. Mr. May, do you have an update? Or can you give us one?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I would say that in the next update you get, it will likely be delayed again. Work is being done on it, but work is also being done on our property standards bylaw and a number of other things. It is, the one outstanding issue left to deal with in the responsible pet ownership strategy relates to cats, which is incredibly complex and sensitive. And so Gloria has got an action plan, and she's working on it, but we don't want to rush it because we want to get it right.
Okay. Because, I mean, with regards to the wild, the wildlife feeding bylaw that we passed last year, I wanted, you know, I was hoping that this was going to come forward sooner than later, because I think they all sort of dovetail together. Would you be able to give council, send us offline information about when we can see this coming forward?
Absolutely. I'll give you an update in terms of the timeline.
Okay. Thank you. With regards to item number 10, statement of remuneration and expenses, just like to have an understanding on the, sorry, HydroCorp. How, there's, there's a number of different meetings that happen. Can I have an understanding of how many meetings per year happen on that committee? Does anybody know?
Yeah. I can answer that. So there's roughly six or seven.
And do we have an understanding, or can we understand what meeting costs would be incurred for any members on that board?
No, so
Is it mileage? Is it, is it?
The meeting expenses, the stipend that members of the HydroBoard, council or non-council, gets is based on a, like a monthly amount, and then an additional per-meeting amount.
Okay. And it doesn't include, does it include mileage as well?
No.
No. Okay. So it's just the, because there's a remuneration here of, and between $4,000 to $8,000. But there's also meeting expenses which can range from $900 to $1,800. So I'm just trying to understand.
So the difference between them is that the mayor's amount is divided between Kitchener-Wilmud Hydro Inc. and Kitchener Power Corp. And the counselors that are on, are just sit on Kitchener Power Corp. And so theirs comes fully from there.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's my only question on that item. And the item on number 11, with regard to the variance report. I'm going to make a quick comment with related to this because we are seeing some substantial surpluses not that long after we've completed our budget. So, and I recognize that this is difficult for staff to get the variance report to us before we've complete final budget day. But we're seeing some, some big differences here. So I would like to ask first question with regards to the tax-supported operation budget on 11-2, where we had $941,000 in a surplus, and we put 169, 169 million? No, 169,000. There's an M behind it. That's what's going to be, sorry. 169,000 into our tax stabilization reserve fund. Why only 169,000?
So, Counselor Etherington, Mr. Chaplin can answer that?
Mr. Chaplin?
So through the chair, I think you may be misreading the report. The year-end surplus was $941,000, and in fact, is very close to what was projected on final budget day. Although not reported in the table, the final budget day projection was about $1.3 million. And so I would suggest that that projection was fairly accurate. That whole amount, the $941,000, will be transferred to the tax stabilization reserve fund. The number that you see total budgeted expenses is $169 million. So that's the total operating budget for the year. And that shows that our year-end surplus is within 1% of budget.
Okay. I think it's just the way it's written that it does seem a bit confusing, at least it did to me, because it says the surplus is equated to 0.6% positive variance from the operating expenditure budget of 1.6, or 169 million. It was transferred to the tax stabilization. So the one point, the 0.6%, which was 941,000, that full amount was moved to our tax stabilization reserve fund?
Correct. And I did do a comparison across all of the budget lines to compare to what was projected to council on final budget day. And with the exception of some variances in the gas utility due to the year-end balancing, I would suggest that we were fairly accurate on final budget day with our projections.
Okay. The other question I had was related to the, sorry, of course, I've lost, oh, there we go, to our water and utility rates. We ended up with a surplus of 567,000, which was better than the budget surplus of 418,000. Would we, had we known this, would we have been able to reduce our water rates by a half a percent and still be in the good?
Through the chair, no, in fact, the opposite is true. On final budget day, you passed a budget assuming a surplus of $697,000. That was the projection on final budget day. We ended at $567,000. So the year ended actually in a worse position than what we believed it would on final budget day.
Okay. And the same is true of the sanitary sewer, then?
Sanitary sewer ended in a more favorable position. But again, both of those enterprises have been dealing with deficits for many years. And so any positive variance simply moves them out of deficit faster than we would have anticipated.
Okay. And that's, I believe, all the questions I had. Thank you.
Counselor Etherington, Counselor Davy has questions as well.
Counselor Davy?
No, not a question. I just wanted to comment on the variance. This, I mean, in a perfect accounting world, there's no, there's no variance or deficit. You come in, you come in at zero. But given our history, I believe we had 10 or so years of deficits in a row before staff and council, to our credit, made some difficult decisions and tightened up those things, those chronic deficits that we had. So this is the second surplus we've had in a row. And once, if that surplus starts getting to too high a degree, I was certainly more than willing to look at, possibly, cutting into that somewhat. But being that the surplus at this point goes to our tax stabilization fund, and that fund is underfunded, it's not, it's not a concern to me. But I just, I really wanted to point out the fact that this is, this is a good indication of strong fiscal management at the end of the year, making sure that we're coming in on target. And I'm happy to see that we've had two surpluses back to back. That shows that it wasn't a fluke.
We have one late starter from earlier caucus. I'll read it, that the director of supply services be authorized to execute an agreement with A.O. Smith Enterprises Limited with respect to a negotiated settlement of a contractual issue. Can I have someone move that, please? Counselor Iannadis, those in favor? Those against? Thank you.
Move that the committee rise and report? All in favor? Frank, all in?
All in favor, sorry. Against? One of these days I'll get this, you know?
Okay. Now you do your cheat sheet. It's been moved by?
It's been moved by me, seconded by Counselor Singh, that the proceedings and the recorded pecuniary pecuniary interests and conflicts taken in the meeting of the Committee of Whole helped this date, as attached here to informing part of these minutes, are hereby adopted and confirmed.
All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Can do bylaws for three readings, but I'll just ask the clerk, when we went to the first reading of the bylaws earlier, had we added B two, the two thousand and seventeen street vendor bylaw?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We're adding it at this moment, so first and second reading, and now third reading for that particular bylaw.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so it's been moved by Counselor Davy, seconded by Counselor Yonetski, that the bylaws listed on the agenda for third reading be taken as read a third time. We finally pass the numbered clearly by the clerk, as well as the addition that's just been discussed. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. And it's been moved by Counselor Schneider that we adjourn. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried.[1757.76]